Good evening, I want to welcome you and call to order this meeting of the Florisville ISD Board of Trustees for this date, November the 15th, 2022, 6:30 PM. Let the record show that there is a quorum of board members present, myself, Dr. Joel Odom, Mrs. Liana Martinez, Mr. Jason Savoda, Ms. Bana Reed, and Mr. Steven Shadrock. Furthermore, let the record show that this meeting has been duly posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Let's stand together, Mrs. Reed will now lead us in prayer, followed by Ms. Martinez, who will lead us in applause.
Dear Heavenly Father, please be with the, our town, our government, say a prayer to keep us going, let us be safe, be with those schools, colleges that had shootings and killings this past week, be with the Florida as they try to recoup again, be with Ukraine, be with those who are suffering with illness, still with COVID and RSV, be with our students and our staff and all the faculty as they progress in our schools, because they are doing an excellent job, watch over them and protect them, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Mr. Shadrock will now recite our FISD vision and mission statement.
FISD vision and mission statement. The FISD vision statement is character, knowledge, and confidence. Our mission statement is, FISD is committed to the development of innovative, lifelong learners who possess character traits to achieve personal and professional success.
Okay, now Mrs. Martinez will read, recite our FISD goals.
The FISD goals are excellent student outcomes, superior workplace environment, exceptional customer service and community engagement, strategic resource management.
All right, we will now do a round robin of our, reciting of our FISD core beliefs. Our FISD core beliefs are, in FISD, we believe all students feel safe and supported in a developmentally and academically challenging environment.
Families are welcomed, partners in their children's education.
Faculty and staff are compassionate, dedicated, adaptable individuals who are student-centered.
Campus leadership is fair, equitable, and clearly communicates and engages with stakeholders.
Superintendent and central administration lead with integrity, transparency, and clear communication to provide a well-resourced educational environment.
Trustees provide student-centered and fiscally responsible leadership and transparent and ethical support of all stakeholders. Now, Mr. Savoda will recite our overview of good governance and code of ethics.
Each month, we highlight one of our good governance indicators and code of ethics that the FISD Board of Trustees follow to promote the best interests of the district as a whole. This month, for the code of ethics, we are highlighting is honor in conduct. I will tell the truth, I will share my views while working for consensus, I will respect the majority decision as the decision of the board, I will base my decisions on fact rather than supposition, opinion, or public favor. Our good governance indicator for this month is the board and superintendent regularly checks expectations and assesses board, superintendent, management, operations.
Oh, that should be team. Team. Now, we have some recognitions for Florisville's ISD students and teacher of the month, Dr. Gilstrap. Yes, we'd like to call the podium Holden Barrett from Florisville Middle School to announce our students and teacher of the month. Mr. Barrett.
Good evening, school board, good evening, superintendent schools. First, I'd like to open up with the fact that obtaining student of the month at Florisville ISD is not an easy feat. Our schools are packed full of amazing students who would excel anywhere in the state of Texas. The two students that will be recognized tonight have risen to the top and have been selected by our teachers, administrators, and other staff members on campus. Our two students of the month display excellence in academics, extracurriculars, and most importantly, character. Our first student of the month was selected for displaying excellent work ethic day in and day out. From displaying dominance on the football field to maintaining A's and Bs in the classroom, this student is the definition of a student athlete. His character is unmatched in evidence to exceptional work ethic and the manner in which he treats people. FMS is proud to present Jacob Guevara as our first student of the month.
Come on up, Jacob.
Stay right there, Jacob.
Our second student of the month was selected for excellence in academics and responsibility. This student has worked hard to be a part of NJHS and has maintained an A average, taking several advanced classes. This student is a jack-of-all-trades who not only excels in academics, but recently obtained her black belt in karate. The student plans to participate ROTC and health science in high school and plans to become a doctor. FMS would like to congratulate Cheyenne Hall as our second student of the month. So, Florisville Middle School would just like to thank you for the opportunity that we have to be able to present these kids. Obviously, they have worked diligently in our building and outside of our building in every avenue, just displaying what it means to be a student for Florisville ISD. We're very proud to present these two kids.
Let's say a couple words real quick. You know, that's outstanding. I can't say enough up here as a board, you know, the stuff that happens behind the scenes, administration, the board and stuff, to have students like y'all that excel and push yourself and have these dreams and expectations means so much to us that everybody around you, especially your parents, you know, what they've done for y'all and what you are doing and taking that and progressing means a lot to us. So, congratulations and keep it up in high school. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Barry, give me that picture. Barry, do it.
I have to get on my toes. One, two, three.
All right, go ahead, parents. Y'all take another one.
All right, congratulations. Thank you. Jumbo dice. Teacher of the month. Mr. Barrett, go ahead, teacher of the month.
So, next, I would like to recognize our teacher of the month. You know, as I said, we have excellent students on campus and it really drives down to the classroom. That is a direct reflection to what the teachers are doing in the classroom day in and day out. So, Ms. Sarah Garcia goes above and beyond every day to help her students. Ms. Sarah Garcia creates personalized learning experiences that are academically challenging and engaging. Her commitment to her students' success is felt when you walk into her classroom. Ms. Garcia's greatest strength is her clear ability to change and to overcome obstacles and the opportunities that she's providing her students. Those are things that are visible daily inside of her class as she's interacting with students and providing different choices and different opportunities for them. It reflects in her actionable steps that she uses to create an optimal learning environment for her students. Florisville Middle School is grateful to have Ms. Garcia as a part of our staff and would like to recognize Ms. Garcia as our teacher of the month. So, next, I would like to recognize our teacher of the month. You know, as I said, we have excellent students on campus and it really drives down to the classroom. That is a direct reflection to what the teachers are doing in the classroom day in and day out. So, Ms. Sarah Garcia goes above and beyond every day to help her students. Ms. Sarah Garcia creates personalized learning experiences that are academically challenging and engaging. Her commitment to her students' success is felt when you walk into her classroom. Ms. Garcia's greatest strength is her clear ability to change and to overcome obstacles and the opportunities that she's providing her students. Those are things that are visible daily inside of her class as she's interacting with students and providing different choices and different opportunities for them. It reflects in her actionable steps that she uses to create an optimal learning environment for her students. Florisville Middle School is grateful to have Ms. Garcia as a part of our staff and would like to recognize Ms. Garcia as our teacher of the month.
Ms. Garcia, again, y'all do such a great job and not just this year, for many, many years that we haven't seen. We don't get to see you in the classroom do what you do, but by having these type of students, we know y'all are doing a great job as Ms. Reed did for so many years. We like to see that and we're so proud that you are with us and doing a great job for these kiddos. It means a lot to us. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mr. Barrett. I'm coming.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Ms. Petrie, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir, just the two that I have.
All right. But first of all, read some of the things that we need to read for the public comments. The board encourages comments about the district from members of the public. Anyone who has signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with the board procedures may do so at this time. The board asks that each participant's comments pertain to district business may no longer than two minutes. Remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda. In addition, the board has adopted policies to provide prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns for employees, students, or their parents, and the general public. Copies of our district policies and procedures on public comment and filing complaints are available on our website. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Jill Stark. So, Ms. Stark, you'll come forward.
I'm going to ask that Samantha Williams step up with me. She is my niece. The issue is regarding her child. And at this point, I will let her take her two minutes and then I will take my two minutes.
So, are we going to switch the two? Because I know Ms. Williams.
That's fine, whatever you have to do about it.
Okay, so, Ms. Samantha Williams, okay, two minutes. Two minutes, yes.
Okay. First of all, my family's been here for about five years. My husband's family is five generations. We come from a long line of branching. And it breaks my heart to come up to you and say this, but our town is failing our children. Our Florisville Middle School is failing our children with IEPs. My daughter works every day, gets up at six o'clock in the morning, goes to tutoring before school and two hours after school. I recently found out that Florisville Middle School is not holding and accommodating or keeping the federal law of an IEP. I am here by notifying you, you guys have 30 days to clean up their act and make them accountable. Our children deserve better. And it's not just my child. There are other mothers out there in the community and in 30 days, if it's not been addressed and issued and you guys have not audited and corrected and held the teachers that are failing, then back to those children with those IEPs accountable, then it leaves me no other option to hold you all accountable. Because you all said that was part of your things, you said it right in the beginning of your meeting. That's what you expect from our community. Those children deserve it. They work hard. No child deserves to not feel smart, heard. Nobody has the right to make them feel belittled or stupid. Nobody should, if they're not loving and compassionate and they don't love their job, then they shouldn't be there. I don't like people, I don't work with people generally. That's not my thing. I, on the other hand, am very good at what I do and I am very happy that I can give my children the adequate support that the school system is not. But other children in our community do not have those tools. And it breaks my heart. So, whatever I have to do for those children to have the same, I will make sure and I will hold the administration of Florisville Middle School and the superintendents and the school board accountable. Because it is our children and our future here in this community. If the school fails, there is no town. So, they need to get their act together over there. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Now, Ms. Stark.
Now, mine. First of all, congratulations, young lady. Very good. That's hard work, dedication. It helps. Some of the children don't have the opportunity to have that type of push, you know, or help. So, that's where that starts. I'm just here to let y'all know that every one of you will be, are probably bonding. You have a certi-bond. If this will not be taken care of within 30 days, we are going to have to stop with our school board and see why they are not holding those teachers responsible. So, just to let y'all know that she's going, I will be working with her on that. She will eventually give you, she will give you an affidavit and a five-day notice to get your certi-bond to her so she would be able to file a claim against any one of you that do not help this situation arise within 30 days. I am done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We will take those into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we can dismiss those. We appreciate parents and students who've come and we appreciate you so very much. And teacher of the year, so wonderful. Thank you so much for all that you guys want to do. A month, I'm sorry. I'll say year. Well, you know what? You know what? I'll tell you what, as board president, no. I'm so excited, right? So, no, I will not give you teacher of the year. But thank you so much for all you guys do, appreciate you. So, you may leave. Congratulations. Congratulations. At this time, we're going to consider approval of the canvass of votes and certification of the November 8th, 2022 election for single-member districts two, six, and seven presented by Mr. Shropp.
Good evening, superintendent schools. Dr. Gilstrap, board president and board trustees. The Texas Election Code requires local school districts to appoint a judge to oversee the official process of running the election. As some of you or all of you may know, Olga Madero is our election judge. By law, it is the board's responsibility to canvass and certify the votes for single-member districts two, six, and seven. Your approval for the canvassing and certification of these votes is required. Mr. President, under the requirements of the Texas Election Code, I have presented you with the election returns along with the board provided to the district by the Wilson County Elections Administrator's Office. These results contain the results of the district's November 8th, 2022 trustee election, which was conducted by the county elections administrator for our district. The handout that I had Ms. Petrie share with you is the actual election summary report from the county that shows the district precinct of six. The three county boxes, box 102 was at Sacred Heart Church, box 206 was at the American Legion Hall, and box 207 was at the Expo Center. With that said, also, it had the total votes, including the early voting, election day, and absentee, which is pretty much the same as mail-in ballot. So, that's what you're looking at there with that copy I gave you. The results of the election are as follows. In District Two, Bana Reed ran unopposed and is declared elected. In District Six, we had a total of 963 votes casted. 411 votes were for Mr. Craig Moots, followed by 376 votes went to Angela Morales Turner, and 176 votes were cast for Alina Berlanga. With Craig Moots receiving the most votes, Mr. Moots is declared elected. I have attached, or I know I've given our board president the order canvassing the return that must be signed by the Board of Trustees President and Secretary to make it official. Are there any questions, board?
Just real quick to clarify, the numbers on the sheet total 411 for Mr. Moots, 375 for Ms. Morales Turner, and 275 for Ms. Berlanga.
And that's total?
Yes, that's total.
Okay. My apologies. Yes. Thank you. Okay, yes. And so, any further questions? With that said, if there are no questions, Mr. President, I move that the board, as the canvassing.
Recommend, you recommend.
I recommend. Ms. Barrett, I recommend that the board, as the canvassing authority for the district trustee election, canvass the results of the November 8th, 2022 trustee election for the Florisville Independent School District by adopting the proposed order, declaring that the election was properly conducted, and declaring the candidates elected in accordance with the election results.
All right, President, I move to accept administration's recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Savoda makes the motion. Do you have a second? Mr. Shadrock, a second. Any further questions? Okay, all in favor, let me know by raising your hand. Question carries. I have to see.
Thank you, board trustees.
At this time, we will now swear in three board members, but one of the board members that we were to swear in is not here tonight, so we'll have to do that in our next meeting. But newly-elected Craig Moots and returning board member Bana Reed being now sworn in. And Central Office Specialist Mrs. Tackett will now administer the oath of office.
Do you want to do one at a time?
You can do both at the same time.
I can do both? Okay. All right. Okay. I state your name after me.
I.
Craig Moots.
I, Bana Reed.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Florisville ISD Board of Trustees.
The Office of Florisville ISD Board of Trustees.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will do to the best of my ability.
And will do to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Ms. Reed, Ms. Reed, Ms. Reed, real quick, she's got something.
Oh.
She has something.
Let's get clear. Correct. You know what's worse, that's what I thought. I'm going to look it up.
Mr. Moots, your board will have to take a picture with your family if you want, or if you want to take a minute to do that.
Sure. That's up to y'all. It'll all cost the same.
Yep.
We have one extra under the weather, so we're minus one. On the count of three, one, two, three.
One more.
All right. One, three. I'm going to take a couple more. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, sir. Come around. Next item on the agenda is item number 5B, reorganization of the Board of Trustees. I will now take nominations for the office of president.
So, I move you, Dr.
Nominate.
Nominate. I second that nomination.
Okay, Ms. Martinez seconds the nomination. Any questions or any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, let me know by raising your hand.
No need to vote since you have one nomination.
Oh, just the one nomination. No need to vote.
Perfect.
It's you. It's me. All right. Next item on the agenda is also the nomination for the office of vice president.
President, I nominate Liana Martinez, our vice president.
All right, do you have a second?
I second.
Okay, Ms. Reed seconded it. All right, any further discussion? All right, any other nominations? All right, Ms. Martinez, you are vice president. All right, now, we will take nominations for treasurer.
Secretary.
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 All right.
I nominate Bana Reed.
I'll second that.
All right, any other nominations? All right, Ms. Martinez, you are vice president. All right, now, we will take nominations for treasurer.
Secretary.
Secretary. All right.
I nominate Bana Reed.
I'll second that.
All right, any other nominations? All right, Ms. Reed, you are now secretary. Quick back to us. Now, for treasurer, we will take nominations and I nominate Jason Savoda as our treasurer.
I'll second.
All right, seconded. All right, any discussion, questions, any other nominations? Okay, Mr. Savoda, you've got treasurer's.
He don't know.
He was trying to have it on. It's not that easy.
The question is, do you accept the nomination?
You need to accept.
I'll kick him under the sink.
Yeah, all right. Very good. All right.
Nothing changed.
Next on the agenda are reports and updates. Dr. Gilstrap will start us off with the superintendent report.
Yes, board members, as everyone is probably well aware, our Mighty Tiger Band and our Jaguar volleyball teams competed and completed their outstanding seasons this past week. The MTB competed at the state level, reaching the highest level that they could. They got there, they represented us well, falling just short of making the finals for that event. The Jaguar volleyball team qualified for the regional tournament and they played hard in the semifinals and fell just short of advancing to the finals at regional. Both of these organizations advanced further in competition than they have in many years. We want to congratulate all of the directors, coaches, the students, and their hard work and their success. We know how much dedication it takes to reach that. They have represented our high school, our district, and our community with pride, so we're very proud of them. We want to thank them for that. Last week, a random unannounced intruder audit was completed at one of our campuses by the Texas School Safety Center. We were notified that our window was open and that unannounced audit did take place with no findings. This is the second such audit that's been completed this year with no findings, and we'd like to recognize and thank our administrative teams and our staff at every campus for their continued vigilance in maintaining our security protocols. I'd also like to thank our students, our families, and our community for their patience and cooperation in practicing those protocols. There's nothing convenient about security, but everybody knows how important it is in this day and age. So, we want to thank all of our campuses for that. This Thursday, we will host our Strategic Plan 2.0 meeting for community members. The meeting will be held at six o'clock at the cafeteria at the middle school. Information has been emailed out to prior participants and also included on our district website and through social media. So, if you know of anyone that is interested in participating in that, please direct them to the website and they can complete the RSVP process there so that we kind of get an idea. Even if they don't complete that process, we're still looking for that input, so we welcome that. The renovation of the former theater building is near complete. Our teaching and learning department will be moving over there during the Thanksgiving break. Other departments here at Central Office will be relocating over Christmas break and once again, all of this as we prepare to relocate this facility or renovate this facility and relocate our pre-K students here for the 23-24 school year. The Finance Committee of board members did meet last week to review the current budget status as well as begin prioritizing for next year. The committee also discussed some current needs to address such as ongoing security projects, teacher technology device upgrades and updates, as well as vehicle fleet updates. The administration will be presenting an itemized budget amendment proposal that will be considered at a future board meeting. So, we will. and relocate our pre-K students here for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The Finance Committee of Board Members did meet last week to review the current budget status, as well as begin prioritizing for next year. The committee also discussed some current needs to address, such as ongoing security projects, teacher technology device upgrades and updates, as well as vehicle fleet updates. These, the administration will be presenting an itemized budget amendment proposal, and that will be considered at a future board meeting, so we will be potentially moving forward with some of those projects, and we'll have more information from the full board to review and consider. The superintendent evaluation forms will be distributed at our December meeting, with the evaluation to take place in January. These forms should be returned to the Board President by December the sixteenth to allow for time for tallying and summing up all of the board comments and feedback. The evaluation process is designed to provide the board members, each and every board member, an opportunity to provide individual feedback, and it's important that we get everyone's feedback, and everyone has the opportunity to participate in that. Finally, we'd like to, or I'd like to welcome aboard our newest board member, Mr. Mutes. Look forward to working with you, Mr. Mutes, and thank you for your interest and support of the district. He and I did spend some time together last week, and in the coming months or month, we will be completing our three hours of local training, and he's also preparing to complete the other trainings that are required by TEA and TASB, so he looks forward to those. Also included on the second page are some events coming up in December. We do have our JAG Basketball Classic, and we have three different band concerts, so if you're out and about looking for something to do during the holiday season, we encourage you to get out and support our students.
Thank you, Dr. Gilstrap. Next agenda item is agenda item five D, District Improvement Plan Formative Review. Dr. Wade.
President Odom, Dr. Gilstrap, and board members. I'm going to get this out of the way, because sometimes I get clicker happy. I get a little head on. So tonight, I will share the formative review of our district improvement plan, which was conducted by our district's leadership team on October the fifth, and included a review of all four strategies and goals that you just read. I'm going to provide you a summary only tonight, but in your board packet, you have the complete formative review if you need some late-night reading. So Goal One is excellent student outcomes. This goal has four objectives and thirty-one strategies. So far, we have accomplished three of those and made considerable progress on seven. A particular note for student safety and well-being is that we have completed capturing kids' heart training and resurizing practice training for all of our new staff. We've had drug awareness presentations provided by the Carins Wilson Juvenile Probation Youth Service for our secondary campuses, and we've hired social services specialists at the campuses. The innovative and personalized learning progress, both the middle school and high school libraries are working on developing maker spaces, and we've improved our Lexia and Reading Plus usage. Those are our online adaptive reading programs at the campuses. For academic growth, our special education staff received training on goal writing, and for the future-ready performance objective, CTE has been reviewing their industry-based certification list to add more certifications, and I believe over twenty students just received their Safe Serve certification last month from testing, so that's exciting. And then finally, the high school has held a FAFSA night. If you recall, FAFSA is now required for every senior to complete before they graduate, and they also held a college night about dual credit offerings and other college offerings at the high school. Goal Two is superior workplace environment. This goal has three objectives and seventeen strategies, of which we've made considerable progress on seven and accomplished one. For continuous learning and support for staff, we have just a small number of teachers completing their reading academies. We took a lot of teachers to the PLC Institute this summer. We've started some ELPs training in the summer. ELPs is English Language Proficiency Standards for our Emergent Bilingual, so our administrators received training. We've had a dual-language coach that is helping both middle school, excuse me, elementary, both elementary campuses, and doing some ELPs training at the secondary campuses. We've provided some instructional coaching support, training, updated their, actually created a handbook for them this year, and we implemented some trade days for choice learning for staff. For the staff's safety and well-being, we increased the medical insurance contribution and provided some dual-language stipends, so excited about that. And staff engagement and satisfaction, our beginning of the year in convocation, we held a survey and had some positive results from the staff. For Goal Three, which is exceptional customer service and community engagement, there are three objectives and four strategies, and we've accomplished, excuse me, we've had considerable progress on one and some progress on two of the four. Highlights for these are the student engagement and satisfaction, our clarity survey, which is our technology implementation, was planned, actually just was completed, family engagement and satisfaction, we have implemented staff and community newsletters that are going out monthly, and Dr. Gilstrap just shared about our strategic plan input, which we've received input from every campus and central office, and now we're going to the community, and then students are planned in January. And then our community partnerships, the volunteer POPS program has had several orientations with parents becoming involved, community members being coming involved, and our back-to-school events with the Back-to-School Bash and several other campus events. Goal Four is strategic resource management. This goal has four objectives and nine strategies, and we've accomplished one of those so far with some progress on five. Some highlights on this one include the strategic plan work, which was already mentioned, the financial audit that's been completed, the JAG grant from our police department's been completed, the systematic operational effectiveness and efficiency, we have an unqualified financial audit, super excited, and internally, our special education department is conducting compliance audits. We are also planning for this early childhood campus, and our emergency operations plan has been submitted. That concludes our first formative review. In January, I'll provide you with the next formative review, which will be conducted by our leadership team. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. How did I do on the no-bow card?
It was ready, don't worry.
So board members, just to kind of clarify, you may see in your packet that some of those will have zero progress, things like that. Some of those are timing issues. We don't do that until the spring, so at this point in time, we haven't done anything. We've only done ten percent of this because it's something that's ongoing throughout the year, whereas other things, you'll see it right off the bat, we train teachers in August, we're a hundred percent done with that in the first month. So always, whenever you're looking at those progress measures, it comes down to what that specific strategy is, or it's just to kind of put that in the back of it.
Thank you, Dr. Wade. Next on the agenda, Ms. Engel will present the public hearing on the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas Report of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year.
Good evening, Dr. Gilstrap, Dr. Odom, and board members. This evening, we are going to do our required public hearing for the school first rating for the district. Again, this is a twenty-one, twenty-two rating, but it is based off of fiscal year twenty-one, so of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year, so a year old left, a year and a half old. Again, the role and statute of authority, this comes from Title Nineteen of the TACT, the Texas Administrative Code, Chapter One-O-nine, Section AA, Commissioner's Ruling Concerning Financial Accountability Rating for Schools. What is School First? It encourages public schools to better manage their financial resources, ensures that Texas public schools are held accountable for the quality of their financial management practices, and creates transparency and disclosure, discloses the quality of local management decision-making processes. So School First is based off of TEA use of the various data sources used within a school district, which include our AFR, our annual financial report, our financial data feed, TSP system, the Foundation School Program, and other sources, including but not limited to the IRS, the TRS, and the Texas Workforce Commission. So the timeline for School First, based on analysis of FISB's financial data for fiscal year twenty-one, which is July first, twenty-twenty, or June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, preliminary ratings are always made available at the beginning of August, so this year, that was August fourth. You have an opportunity to appeal if for some reason you don't agree with what they've determined until September sixth, so they give you about a month, and if you don't appeal, then your rating becomes final on September the seventh, the day after the last day to appeal. It's based on an A-through-F rating system, so there's standard grading, ninety through to a hundred is an A, eighty to eighty-nine is a B, sixty, there's sixty, seventy-nine is a C, and below sixty or a no on any of the critical indicators will cause you to fail the rating. So there are twenty indicators. The first indicator is timely submission of your AFR, your annual financial report, so it's due within thirty days of these two deadlines, so if you've got a June thirtieth fiscal year like we do, it is due to TEA by November twenty-seventh. The date it was received last year was November eleventh, so we were within that, so we got a yes. Auditor opinion, was there an unmodified opinion? Yes, there was. Monetary default on any debt? We did not default on any debt, therefore, we passed that indicator. Timely payments to governmental entities, including TRS, IRS, Texas Workforce, and any other governmental entities, all on time, so yes. Indicator five has been not scored for probably the last three years, but they continue to leave it in there, because they're thinking eventually they'll score it again, but that one's not scoring. Indicator six, a quick decrease in fund balance. We did not have a decrease in fund balance over the last three years, therefore, we passed that indicator. Indicator seven, a number of days cash on hand. On this one, we only got four of the ten points, that being an accounting, in this indicator, they only look at our object codes that are strictly cash, so eleven oh one to eleven oh nine. We had a lot of due-to, due-from, and fund accounting, where you've got to have, balance your funds every time you do it, so all of that cash was sitting in a due-to, one from, due-to another fund. We have cleaned that up this year. Next year, this will be a full ten points for our last year's audit, so working with the auditors, we got that cleaned up. Again, it was all there, it was just the object code it was sitting in, it was still an asset object code, it just wasn't in a cash object code. Got that cleaned up. Current assets to current liabilities, right there, we're knocking on the door of that three, we're at two, we're at a two-eight-six, eight out of ten points on that one, current assets to current liabilities. General fund revenues equal or exceed expenditures. Our revenues were higher than our expenditures for that year, therefore, we get the full ten points on that one. Debt service ratio, this is another indicator, they are not scoring right now, but they continue to leave in there. Long-term liabilities to total assets, there we get that they want us below a point six, we're at a point five-three, therefore, we get the full ten points on that one. Debt principal and interest payments. This is another one that's mathematically scored, they want you below a four, we're at a three-point-three-four, therefore, we receive a full ten points on that indicator. Administrative cost ratio, this is looking at making sure you're not top-heavy in your district. It is based on a sliding scale based off of your ADA, so in this one, they're wanting us equal to or less than point one-one-five, we're at point one-zero-one-six, therefore, we receive the full ten points on that indicator as well. Students-to-staff ratio, this is looking at if you have a decline in your students, your staff, and making sure your staff ratio, you're decreasing staff at the same time. We did not have that, therefore, we received a full ten points there. ADA within allotted range. We all know why they're not grading this one, it's because of COVID. ADA was all over the place, so again, this indicator was not scored this year, and that is why, because of the, and this was the first year that they didn't score that one, and it's because of COVID. Peans, we submit our peans data to TEA, we also submit our audits to TEA, so this is looking at to make sure that our numbers that are coming through peans are matching or within less than three percent variance of what they're getting on those two data feeds, and they were, so we pass that as well. Material weakness, again, this goes back to the auditors, do the auditors find any material weaknesses in our processes when they were doing our audit? They did not, therefore, we pass this indicator. Any material noncompliance, audit as well, there was no material noncompliance, therefore, we get full ten points on this indicator. We keep all our required postings on our website, and in papers we're required to, we did, so we received five points out of that, that's a max on that one. And property, work property, discussion of property taxes with a hundred and twenty days of adopting the budget, we did that as well, so we pass that indicator. So here's a, just looking at every indicator there, total of ninety-two points, therefore, we received an A for this, for our first hearing for the twenty-one, twenty-two, based on fiscal year twenty. The other thing, are there any questions on any of the indicators before I go to the disclosures that are required?
I had a question, was it indicator six that talked about the fund balance?
That was on quick decrease in fund balance, yes. This one?
Uh-huh. So what would be a failing on that?
So if your, if your fund balance is decreasing, if it's going down, so if you're dipping into fund balance, and your expenditures are more than your revenue, then that would call you to fail it over a course of time. I mean, they know that there's times when you might have dipped into it for a year or so, but they're just wanting to make sure over a course of three years, we're not dipping into it, and yes, and then we're not, yes, decreasing our fund.
And where are these indicators at? Like, we want to later go back and.
Um, it's, there's a, there's a link on TEA's website, if you Google School First Ratings, it'll bring you to it, you can click, there's a link for Pope, there's a, or I think we can send it out as well, but there's a link for, oh, it's closer, there's also a link for charter schools.
I think there's a link under our required postings on our website.
I know the reports are up there, I'm not sure if there's a link to the actual report, but, they are on TEA's, TEA's website, and you can go back and look at them from yours. Pass.
Thank you.
Your word. So the first report also requires us to, some required disclosures, the superintendent's current employment contract is available, a summary scheduled for the fiscal year for the last, for the twelve-month period that we just ended, so this, the scores are based off of fiscal year twenty-one, but disclosures are for fiscal year twenty-two, so the year we just finished. So reimbursements received by superintendent and each board member, a summary scheduled for fiscal year for the dollar amount, and compensation and/or fees received by superintendent from any other school districts or outside entities in exchange for professional consulting or personal services, a summary scheduled for the fiscal year for the total amount by executive officers and board members of gifts with economic value greater than two-hundred-fifty dollars or more, and a summary scheduled for the fiscal year for dollar amount by board members for the aggregate amount of business transactions with the school district, and any other pertinent information to board fees necessary. And it requires us to have a public hearing within two months after the ratings are final. So if you, for the superintendent's current employment contract, you can follow that link there, it is on our website, available, it's out there. Reimbursements received by superintendent and each school board member for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, you can see that there. Any compensation or fees received by superintendent for any, there was none, amount of gifts in aggregate of two-hundred-fifty dollars or more, there were none, dollar amount of any transactions with the school district by a board member, there were none. Questions?
Well done.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Engel, thank you for your department and how you transact our business and conduct our business in a very obvious, transparent way, and in doing it right, and make sure it's done correctly and to the standards of not only TEA, the State of Texas, but to the board's direction. So to have a clean audit, and then to have a superior rating on our first report, congratulations, and thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much, Lindsay.
Thank you for making our payment on time.
Yeah, be sure.
I'm glad you caught that.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item number six, action items. First action item is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or discussions on the items on the consent agenda?
President, I move to accept consent agenda.
I second.
Makes the motion, and Ms. Reed seconds it. Any further questions? Motion. All right, all in favor, let me know by raising your hand. Six, zero. The next action item is to consider approval of the FISB Board's standard operating procedures, presented by Dr. Gilstrap.
Board members, it is in our operating procedures that the board review these and approve these on an annual basis. This was done last November, and these have been updated on our website as of last November. Have not heard from any board members, I shared this out about a month ago, I haven't heard from anyone regarding any changes or requested adjustments, and so we are going to recommend that we, the board approve it as presented.
I may make a motion to accept the administration's recommendation. It was second, Mr. Shawrock, second, second.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion, and then Mr. Shawrock. All right, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. If you choose to vote for this motion, let me know by raising your hand, and anyone opposed, motion to the court, six, okay. All right, the board will now convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one, one-zero-seven-one, attorney consultation regarding legal issues pertaining to updates to board policy, CLA, local, and the time is seven nineteen PM. All right. Seven fifty-seven PM. 7:57 PM, we are exiting the closed session and going to open session. Alright. Next on the agenda is eight A. What's that?
Item on the agenda is eight A.
Eight A, okay, yes. Eight A, consider approval of possible action to adopt updates to Board Policy, CLA Local.
I move for the adoption of policy CLA Local as proposed in executive session.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor, let me know by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries six, zero. And so we adjourn, if there's any other, no other business, we adjourn at 7:57 PM.